Welcome to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning board of appeals public hearings for Monday, August 27, 2018. Before we get to the hearings portion of the meeting, there's some house cleaning items that we need to do. When we do get to the public hearing portion of the meeting, I will read the appeal into the minutes. The applicant can then come to the table, tell us what they want, why they want it. If you are here for a hardship, for a variance, it is incumbent upon you to give us a hardship for which we could grant the variance. If you are here for a special permit, the burden is a little bit less. It just has to be not more detrimental than what is an existing condition. Once at that point, some of us may or may not have some questions for the applicant. Once we are done, I will open it up to the floor if any interested parties would like to ask any questions. First order of business is we have a bill invoices for the Worcester Telegram and Gazette, WB Mason and B&amp;B Printing totaling $323. It's 168 to the TNG, 129 to B&amp;B Printing, and $26 to WB Mason. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve payment of bills.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Takes three signatures. Next order of business is minutes for the July 30 meeting. I don't know if anyone had a chance to review them?
I did.
Okay.
There are some corrections on who made motions and who seconded on each hearing, I think. And I think Mariah Rhodes, how do you pronounce it?
Yeah.
Is listed twice, so I think there's some corrections needed to be made.
Okay, have your corrections been forwarded to?
Yes. I'll follow up.
Made corrections? Okay. Can I get a motion?
To approve, I make a motion to approve minutes with corrections.
Get a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's got signed by our clerk when he shows up. Wait, before we get to the public hearing, ah, never mind. Here you go. We can approve the minutes. So people just sign. Your first 6:30 hearing is to hear the appeal of Burisma Batare, 45 Browning Road, Shrewsbury, Massachusetts, for a special permit to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw under Section 6, Table 1, to operate an in-home business in the Residence A District upon property located at 45 Browning Road. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 9, Plot 008053. There's the applicant here. Come on up, tell us what you're doing. Just state your name for the record, please.
It's Burisma Batare.
Okay.
And I'm a skincare therapist, and I want to like set up a, like a small spa, day spa at my residence.
Okay, so how will you operate? What kind of hours?
The hours is already mentioned over there, like 36, 30 to 36, 36 hours a week, including the weekend. And the employee is, I'm the only one who's working there, so there's gonna...
No employees other than you?
No, I'm the only one working there. And I do have like the parking space, like enough parking space for the, my client.
And you'll be, I would say one client at a time?
Yes, yes.
And what you have here is 30 hours a week, Tuesday to Friday, 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., Saturday and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.?
Yes.
Correct? Okay. Anyone have any questions?
I did have a question, but you clarified it. You had a number of parking spaces too in your driveway and two on the street, but you just clarified that it would be one client at a time. So as one is leaving, the other one would be arriving. There might be two cars there at once, but okay.
That is true, yeah.
Are you currently working?
Right now, I'm on, no.
Okay.
Yeah, but I was working before.
Right, okay. So do you have an existing client base?
I do some.
Okay, okay. Any other questions? Anyone in attendance wish to be heard on this? Okay, any other questions from up here? Okay, there be no further questions or comments. We'll take it under advisement. You'll be notified of our decision.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next 6:30 hearing is to hear the appeal of Peter Nguyen, Shrewsbury, Mass, for a special permit to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw under Section 4-B to construct a second floor on an existing non-conforming single-family dwelling and a variance under Section 4-B for increasing the footprint more than 50% in the commercial business district upon property located at 26 Crosby Street. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 13, Plot 046000. Have a seat.
Thank you, sir.
State your name for the record, please.
My name is Peter Nguyen, and first of all, I would like to submit a hard copy of the updated plan.
Sure. Okay, it's different than?
This is the plot plan.
Okay, okay.
That's three copies.
What's that?
Different than the one we have.
That's just the plot plan. There's no diff, it's not a new plan.
It's different.
Okay, so tell us what you're doing.
So we're gonna, we extend the foundation in the back, a little bit in the back, and a little bit in front, so that we can build the second story upon that.
So are you overhanging the original building?
Right now, we have the first floor.
Right.
Only one first floor, so we don't, not overhang, but we, so in the, in the back, right, you see that the part on the left-hand side in the back, that we extend that foundation a little bit there. So that's part of second floor would be on top of that. And the front porch as well.
Okay.
The front porch right there. So part of second floor would sit on that. If you look at the floor plan, you'll see that as well.
It's existing non-conforming, but my question is, what's the square footage before and after?
I'm not sure if the square, the exact square footage was provided, but...
But how do we know what?
So I think from, from looking at the construction drawings, it looks like the first floor is actually increasing out of the back a little bit.
Yeah.
And so that is increasing beyond, with the second story addition, that would be increasing beyond the 50%.
Sure.
I don't have the exact
So the...
...square footage in front of me. I don't know.
So the existing building footprint is 2,535 square foot, and the proposed building footprint is 2,800 square foot.
So the footprint's going up 300 square feet, but then you're putting a second floor addition on?
They extend the foot.
So what's the square footage gonna be when this is complete?
You mean the house or just the foot?
The entire, the entire house. What will be the square footage of the house?
Let me, let me put it over here.
That's what I don't see. Yeah, I don't see it anywhere. You see there's an index somewhere. Doesn't it usually come with the building permit? The square footage and everything, all the calculations?
Yeah, I believe this is prior to the building permit being filed, though.
Yeah, but how do we know what we're voting on?
So, so looking at the, essentially by looking at the construction drawings to the, what's provided in the plot plan, there's, there's an addition, sorry, that will be on the front porch, essentially where the existing concrete is.
Yeah.
That will be finished out. And then the kind of rear side where the existing deck is will be, there'll be an addition to the rear of that.
Right. Well, I got that, but my question is, I don't know how much relief we're granted beyond the 50%.
Right, so, so in order to, and also to ensure that the appropriate relief is given, we need to see the plot plan of the, not just the existing structure, but the proposed additions to make sure it meets setbacks. And that was noted in the comment letters on August 17.
And it wasn't provided?
No, I've not, I've not provided.
And that's not on the list either.
Do you happen to have two or three more copies of this that you don't need, so that our other members can look?
Oh, I, I only have three copies.
Or no? Okay, we'll share.
Okay.
I only give us three copies.
Okay.
Oh, he, yeah, he noted in here existing.
This and this.
Okay.
Is that one different from what was provided with the application, the one that was provided to me?
It's different.
It is different?
It's adding, we're seeing the proposed additional foundations on this new plan, and the rear setback would be going from 53.6. This is not, this is, this can't be right.
That's right, because it increases, right.
It doesn't increase. It should go, it should be less, and this is showing 57 with the new foundation. So there's something wrong here.
It's like maybe the numbers are just transposed.
Yeah.
Could be. So they may be going from 57 with the existing footprint, and the rear, rear yard setback will then go to 53.6. That's not of issue. It's the front.
Right.
Setback, and that currently, from the application, is 8.1, eight feet, one inch. And with this additional foundation, I have no idea what it will be. It's not noted.
Okay.
Actually, I think it is, I think the 8.1 is here. It matches the backside of the house.
8.1, I think.
I mean, on the left side.
Also 8.1, so which one is really right?
Yeah, unless they're just, unless it's parallel.
No, but that's not...
Right, which certainly doesn't look.
The 8.1 is not to the property line, is it?
I believe it's to the... 8.1's to the...
They're all.
Right, it's just that the road is narrower than the right of way, I think.
The road to the porch.
So the application does say the subject property, oh, sorry, has an existing 8 and 1/10th front yard setback, so I don't know what the new one will be.
Yeah, I think we need, we need more information before we can hear this, before we can decide on this. A, we need to know the square footage before and after of the building, of the residence.
Including the second floor.
Including the se, yeah, not, not just the square footage of the footprint, but the square footage of the building. You're requesting relief because, you're requesting a variance because it's more than 50% increase. And, but we don't know how much more than 50% because that information is not here. The other issue is, this is, you are requesting a variance, so you need to make sure that you exhibit a hardship, tell us what a hardship is in order for us to grant the variance. There's enough here to, for a special permit, but until you tell us what the hardship is, there's not enough for a hardship. So I, I think what we need to do is continue this hearing until the next meeting. And I think you should talk to the building inspector and Mr. McGoldrick and find out what information you need to provide to, for us to be able to make a decision.
I, I talked to Ms. Sheehan.
Yeah.
And I talked to her, and she just told me to redo the plot plan, and then I redo the plot plan, and I sent it to her, and she said...
It's not, it's not sufficient. We need the square footage. Right now, that's all that's missing, yeah. Yeah, who, can you state your name, please? Who are you?
Oh, sorry, my name's Eric Finn. I'm actually the person that, that the plot plan was done for.
Okay.
And speaking on my behalf.
Okay.
I'm just trying to see, like, all the blueprints right here.
So it's, right now, I think we want to continue because there is more information than what we need.
I move to continue to the next meeting?
Yeah. Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so, talk to Mr. McGoldrick or Ms. Sheehan tomorrow, or sometime before the next meeting, and find out exactly what you need to, so to move forward, so that we can make a decision.
Can I, can I have a copy of the plot plan that was provided?
Yeah, give me the new one. I want to put this one in file, actually. Okay, well, so, it's stating time certain. Our next meeting is August, or September? September 24th at 6:30.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next 6:30 hearing is to hear the appeal of Jeffrey A. Govan and Christine S. Govan, 15 Eaton Place, Shrewsbury, Mass, for a variance from Section 7, Table 2, to construct a garage 25.3 feet from the front property line and 2.9 feet from the side property line in the Residence B-1 District upon property located at 15 Eaton Place. The subject premise is on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 23, Plot 352000. Please state your names for the record.
Jeff Govan.
Christine Govan.
Okay.
Before we decide, we also have pictures showing the layout of the property.
Sure, as long as you don't mind not getting a look.
No.
We don't have multiple copies, sorry.
Okay, so tell us what you're doing.
So we would like to add a two-car garage to the side of our house. We'd like to convert the front corner room, which was a single-car garage before, it was converted to a room before we moved there. So we'd like to convert that section back to garage and extend out to the side. Let me see, 13 feet, and then into the front, 11 feet. So to be the only place we could put the garage, because on the other side of the house, we only have 14.8 feet, and we wouldn't be able to cut into the house. There's a basement right there. We can't go into the backyard because there's a, there's a slope. And, let me see. So we can't put it on the back of the house on the, on the left side, because, I'm sorry, on the right side, there's a large, large tree in the front of the house on the right side. That's actually our neighbor's tree.
Right.
And then on the other side, there's a stairway entrance. We can't block that with the driveway trying to get to the back of the house either. And again, in the back of the house, there's a slope.
So it's basically the only place where you can put it?
Right, yeah. And as far as the, the neighbor next to us, where the garage is gonna be closest, we have a very good relationship with him. We've spoke to him a few times about this. He's amiable to it. And it's gonna be a garage, not a living space, so I feel like it's not, it's gonna be very noisy.
Or infringe on his privacy.
Yeah.
And behind you is?
The same neighbor that the garage would be going to is his land.
Okay.
So it kind of cuts back into a U.
Like an L.
Yep.
Yeah.
With regard to the, sorry, can I say, with regard to the area in the back, it looks like you have a fair amount of land back there, but you're saying that there's a slope. Is it too steep to build on, or is it just a slope?
The majority of that land is actually the neighbors. You can see the...
I'm sorry, I mean, I'm looking on here, on your, your lot there.
Right. Yeah, that, the majority of that is, is a rather steep slope. It tapers gradually, and then it really goes.
And then really goes.
Yeah, yeah. It's great for sledding.
Anybody else? You're okay?
The only question I have, so the neighbor is amenable to this. Do you have anything stating that he's amenable to it, or?
No.
Do you know that we're okay? You're, are they getting notice?
Yeah.
They'd be here.
Okay.
Our experience.
Yeah.
Or send us a letter if they can.
If this is to be approved, would you be opposed to any type of screening between you and your neighbor?
Screening?
Plantings or something?
I'm sorry?
Plantings or?
Oh, no. There was a fence there at one time.
Yeah.
But just by deterioration, we ended up taking it down. It was something that had been there for years and years. It was just a wooden fence, and it was falling apart. So there was something at one time, so we wouldn't be opposed.
No.
Okay. What do you have in mind?
Some type of planting or...
That would be okay with you?
Yes.
Anybody in attendance wish to be heard on this?
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
So my only concern with the, the planting or the fence, the, the garage would be not coming directly off of the home. It's kind of up to the front a little bit. I'm not sure if I'm being clear. If you look at the plot plan...
Yep.
There's...
It's close to the street and the houses.
There's a section in the back of the home. See how the, where it comes out, the 13 feet?
Yep.
Um, I have no problem with putting a fence. Actually, I'm not sure if our neighbors would...
Actually, we're talking more plants than fencing.
Okay. I would have no problem with that as well. I, I'm just not sure if our neighbor would want that, because they do like to pull around to the back of the home, and there's plenty of room. But if we put shrubs there or, or plants or something, I'm not sure if that would then prohibit that.
Encroach.
As long as they're on your, as long as they're on your side, yeah. Yeah, it shouldn't be an issue.
So they have 2.9 feet
Right.
to plant something along skinny like an arbor lighting.
Yeah, exactly. Anyone else? Everyone's good. Anyone in attendance wish to be heard? Okay, there be no further questions or comments. We'll take it under advisement. You'll be notified of our decision.
Thank you.
Our next 6:30 hearing is to hear the appeal of Matthew Tomiolo, 295 Raffin Street, Shrewsbury, Mass, for two special permits to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw under Section 4-B to construct a second floor addition and a front porch on an existing non-conforming single-family dwelling in the Residence B-1 District upon property located at 31 Wilder Road. The subject premise is on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 17, Plot 027000. Welcome, and state your name for the record, please.
Matthew Tomiolo, 295 Raffin Street.
Okay.
Owner and contractor to do the work on the property.
Right.
So it's a pre-existing non-conforming for the front setback.
And you're just putting a second floor with?
Putting a second floor.
Maintaining the same footprint.
Yes, maintain the same footprint, and the second floor is less than 50%.
Yep.
Staying three bedrooms as it was originally, just putting two up.
Okay.
And the front porch, there's a front stoop right now. And the front porch, there's a front stoop right now. That's twenty-one, so I'm a fucker. Twenty-one point seven feet from the road and I'm looking to put a, more of a farmer's porch. It's going to be twenty-one, twenty point eight, so less than ten inches closer.
Okay. And that's a special permit as well, correct?
Uh, correct. So the existing is non-conforming.
Right.
But the, um, increase of the porch essentially requires the special.
Right, okay. I don't have any questions.
I don't either.
What's the increase in height? It looks like probably not more than a few feet.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's staying as a cape, so it's probably going to be maybe three feet taller.
Okay.
Not much.
That's all for me.
Okay. Anyone in attendance wish to be heard? Uh, please state your name for the record, sir.
Uh, Ross Robbins, uh, thirty Wilder Road. I have a question. Are, are you going to leave the garage up?
Yes. Yeah, I'm going to try and, you know, shore it up a little bit. No, I'm not.
You're good, okay. Anybody else wish to be heard? State your name for the record, please.
Rick Canning, twenty-four Wilder Road. Uh, just making a general comment that, uh, the work that's done so far, they stripped the siding off. It is a horrible high so, I don't know. And I would hope they show a little more sense in going forward with the project.
That's why we're here.
Well, the way you strip the siding off, it looks horrible, absolutely horrible.
But that's part of the construction.
Process, yeah.
Process, I mean.
You can't tear it down without, and.
They don't have permission to do what they're starting to.
We have a demo permit. Yes, we have a demo permit.
Oh, that's correct.
Yeah.
Anybody else? There'll be no further questions or comments. We'll take it under advisement. You'll be notified of our decision. Thank you. Our final six thirty hearing is to hear the appeal of Joseph Sterniolo, eleven Eckport, Shrewsbury, Mass. For a special permit to the town of Shrewsbury zoning by law under section four dash B to construct a roof over a deck that was constructed by special permit in two thousand and twelve on a single-family dwelling in the residence B two district upon property located at eleven Eckport. The subject premise is on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate fifty-seven, plot one two eight, zero zero zero. Welcome, please state your name for the record.
Uh, my name is Joseph Sterniolo.
Okay. So, tell us what you're doing.
Uh, well, what we'd like to do is, uh, we have a second floor deck in the back of our home. It, uh, overlooks the lake. The views are great, but especially on a day like today where it was ninety-something degrees out. Up there on the deck, it's, it's a hundred and twenty. So, we wanted to get a roof put on, uh, so we can enjoy, you know, the house that we bought.
Okay.
I know that the previous owner, uh, he, it was a small cottage. It was torn down. This is a brand-new home. Uh, they had to get a special permit for the deck, which, which they got and which is why the deck's there. And we just want to put a roof over it.
Anyone have any questions up here?
Is the, is there plans to enclose the, uh?
Not currently. I can only imagine how much that would cost.
So just a roof and leaving it open?
Yep, for, for a long time.
Yep, okay.
And no, no, well, no pla, no plans to close it anytime soon.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. George?
If he does plan to do it in the future.
Yeah?
Then he has to come back to.
Mr. George?
Yeah, so, so that would transition, um, that's, that's kind of, um, where we've been working with the, the non-conforming structures where, um, I think once they've done the, the porch with the roof, uh, I, I think even with the enclosed space that that would, um, no longer really require the special permit because at that point, really what we're trying to catch is when the, when the scale of the, the structures is being upgraded that we, we have the hearing, um, to make sure that that's, um.
So technically, uh, machine would be able to issue a.
Yeah, so I think, I think this would increase the footprint of the, the space that at this point, uh, if they were to enclose it, it would just be a simple, uh, building permit.
Okay. Any other questions? Anyone in attendance wish to be heard on this? There'll be no further questions or comments. We'll take it under advisement. You'll be notified of our decision. Thank you. So let's go back, um, forty-five Browning Road. Questions, comments, discussion?
So you're supposed to just see one client at a time?
One client at a time. We can put that as a condition. Time limit?
There would really be two clients perhaps at one time as they're transferring.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and, and you can't prevent someone from coming early.
True.
Or staying late, I guess.
And they have plenty of parking in the driveway?
Two cars. Her car would be there, but there's room for one other car and then somebody would be on the street.
And the other, do we want to put a time limit?
We usually do, don't we?
Yeah. I would suggest two years.
That's fine.
Yeah. Two years. Anyone agree?
I agree.
Okay. So the conditions are two years, uh, to be renewed to make sure there's no nuisance factors. And then, uh, not more than one customer at a time. Excluding when someone's coming and leaving. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve with the conditions?
Can I get a second?
Second, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, we already moved to continue the second one. Third is, um, fifteen Eaton Place. I believe they gave us a hardship with the slope.
Mm-hmm.
And the, the, actually, the si, and topography and shape.
As long as they do some screening.
Right. What do you want for screening?
Should we say a vegetative buffer along the garage addition?
Yep.
How far, how, let's specify.
Point nine feet.
Yeah, no, I get that, but how far along the line? You know, where do you want to start it? Where do you want to end it?
Where the garage is.
Just.
Yeah, I mean, just to screen it off a little.
Okay. Screening the garage, yeah.
Yeah, and, and I think, um, in regards to the, um, neighbor being amicable, at least they represented it that way. I think leaving it somewhat vague will allow them to.
Right.
The flexibility to make.
And that's for the next owner down the road, at least they have some screening.
Right.
Yep.
Are we allowed to consider the effect on the future property owner of the adjacent house or no?
That's what Paul just was addressing. So he, he wants at least some screening.
Just by the.
Yeah, that's what I was figuring, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, they do have a topogra, topography.
Hardship.
Problem, yeah.
Yeah, the hardship is exhibited by the slope, yeah. In, in terms of what you're saying, a lot of times, you know, we have run into issues like this where land that was commercial at one time has had residential development. And, and twenty years later, um, the residents complain about the commercial businesses that are thereby right. Which sometimes happens, but typically what ends up, you know, you, someone down the road buying it knows it's there.
Yeah, that's true.
So even if we've granted the variance.
The yearndose.
They, they know, you know, you know what you're buying. They know what you're moving into.
And I like that we're asking for a vegetative buffer instead of a fence.
Offensive.
The fence would be damaged with turning around.
So can I get a motion?
A motion to approve fifteen Eaton Place with conditions?
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Uh, next thirty-one Wilder Road. I absolutely never have an issue with a second floor addition.
It is more non-conforming, but it's the front only.
Yep.
And I have no problems.
Okay. One voting sheet or two? Two. Uh, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Both?
Yeah.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Got you.
Yep, thank you. Uh, next eleven Eckport.
Thank you.
Fifteen, uh, fifteen Eckport, anyone? Or eleven Eckport, I'm sorry. Any discussion? Get a room?
No.
None.
Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Uh, forty-five Browning Road was unanimously approved. Fifteen Eaton Place was approved. Thirty-one Wilder Road, uh, two special permits were unanimously approved. And eleven Eckport was unanimously approved. You have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. May I, would you, uh, present my case?
No, it's been continued. It's date and time certain, so it's already been announced, so it has to wait until the next meeting.
Can we just talk to somebody so we can make sure that all, you know, we should.
Yeah, I'll give you my card and we can, um.
So, you know, I don't want to play telephone with him, so I'll just contact you directly. Okay, thank you.
New business. We have a two requests for withdrawals, for reconsideration, but withdrawals. Uh, twelve Miria Room, uh, we denied a variance for setback because the applicant did not show up. Want to give us a little background?
Yeah, so the, um, applicant on this one was, um, working on getting, uh, a revised plot plan. And, uh, in his letter to us, uh, mentioned that the plot plan was, was delayed. And so, um, they didn't show up to the meeting. The board subsequently denied it. And so they're, they're asking for a reconsideration and withdrawal without prejudice, uh, which will, my understanding is they're, they are looking to reapply for the September hearing, in order to, to go forward with the, the revised plot plan. But it'll be a full new application.
Okay, so here's my question. The rules say, "Once a petition has been voted upon and the meeting adjourned, reconsideration of a decision shall be allowed only by affirmative consent of all board members. In no case shall reconsideration be allowed after seven days of the board's vote or after the decision has been filed with the town clerk." So I don't know.
So, so the, um, I communicated with them, uh, fairly early after the decision, um, to withdraw and they said that they were looking to, to, or, uh, fairly after the, um, decision to, um, deny and they said that they were looking to withdraw and they got that email to us.
So long after.
Well, so here's, so for withdrawal, the rules are, "An application may be withdrawn without prejudice at any time prior to the public hearing by notifying the town clerk in writing. After the opening of the hearing, but prior to the filing of the decision, an applicant may be withdrawn by mutual consent of the applicant and a majority of the board." So I'm thinking that would be what was co, would be covered, it's a withdrawal, not a reconsideration.
Right, so, and so, and so with, with the email, that's why, uh, so the decision to deny was not filed.
Okay.
In order to.
So this is a withdrawal, not a reconsideration.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, can I get your motion? Is there any discussion, first of all?
Well, I have a little concern because they didn't even show up for the hearing.
Yeah, I know, I know. Normally, I'm of the same mind.
So that's my thought process, I mean.
That they are going to reapply?
Yeah, it would, it would be a full, um.
So the only reason of the withdrawal is to.
So, so.
It doesn't, it doesn't put it to your clock.
So without a withdrawal, without prejudice, they would be required to wait two years in order to reapply. So this would allow them to reapply for the September hearing.
Okay. Any discussion?
I mean, based on the email, it looked like there was a miscommunication. Now, I agree, uh, Mr. George, that somebody should have been here to state that fact. But, um, I'm actually, I, I would be inclined to, to grant the withdrawal.
Lisa?
This says in his last email, "He now has confirmation that the newly detailed plot plan will be ready for the meeting on the twenty-seventh of August." But he couldn't have come before us today.
No, because.
So, so with.
We already denied it, yeah.
So, he, he tried his best. He says he had it, so I'd give him a chance.
Was it submitted to you?
Uh, so we haven't received that yet. Um, there's still, there's still the two days to, uh.
Well, I'm, I'm against the.
Yeah.
I'm against it. That's my thought process on it.
You say we, we have two days till the deadline for the September meeting.
For the September meeting. Um, and essentially, this, the only effect that this would do is that within the next two years, even if he doesn't have the plan provided now, he just, you know, two years is quite some time to, to wait. So, this would just give him the opportunity when he does get, uh, essentially his ducks in a row, if you will, the ability to reapply and come back before the board.
Refresh my memory, what was he requesting?
Um, so it was, uh, a request, um, to, um.
A rear yard.
For the rear yard setback for, um, I believe it was, um, uh, an addition, um, that was going into the rear yard setback. Um, but there was, there's a, a number of, um, points of information on the, the provided plot plan that didn't allow us to really.
Didn't he give us the plot plan originally, so we couldn't?
Correct.
So we couldn't, we couldn't, right, we didn't have the information. Okay.
Well.
Two years seems a little harsh.
Yeah.
I think I'd be inclined to grant it and if, see if they can make this time. And if they can't, then.
Right. That's easy enough. Okay. Uh, can I get a motion from you?
I so move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay. We don't need, do we need a vote sheet on that or? Oh, is it?
Business holders.
Oh, you're good. Okay. Uh, twelve Miria. Look the other side. Just reminding you. Okay, next, new business. Uh, pretty much the same issue. The withdrawal of five seven nine, five eight five Lake Street. This was the administrative appeal for the inclusion unit. What's, what's going on with that?
So, uh, my understanding is the, um, applicant for this is, um, moving forward on, uh, including the inclusion, uh, working through the inclusionary, uh, process to include that in the project. And so, um, this would essentially kind of just smooth out that process, um, and, um, kind of, cleans the slate with the ZBA in order to, you know, move forward if they need any more, uh, planning board hearings or, or, or whatnot.
So theoretically, they are in agreement to include.
Right, so my understanding is they, they are, they are, um, moving forward.
Anything from the planning board?
They came in front of us last month and, um, we requested some more information. They were just doing investigative, this, they're not really before us yet. They were just feeling out where the board stood. So I think this is, um, would be an advan, advantage for them to continue the conversation without having a, a decision by your board in conflict with them coming before us again.
So you're in favor of this?
I would be in favor of the withdrawal.
Right, okay. But you're, they're still negotiating with you on the inclusionary unit.
That's correct.
So that's not. Continue the with, it, what's the?
No, I mean, it's, to be honest, it's, it's more procedural in nature than. No, I mean, it's, to be honest, it's it's more procedural in nature than than anything, so um essentially the appeal was to um over, it was looking to um if the board had voted favorably on it, then the the hearing would have to go back to the planning board in order to um, and they would, they would have to rehear it and would not be allowed to bar um.
So it's effectively the same thing?
Right, so so the, so the the decision of the planning board would still stand at this point, however, there's no um additional kind of um zoning board.
Is there anything in writing from the appellant?
Yeah, so they, um, we did receive a a letter requesting that withdrawal, uh, which was included in the day of packets.
But is there a agreement yet with the planning board that they are gonna inclu- include?
So my understanding is that they're working towards that and.
So it's not, it's not committed yet?
With with or without the zoning board of appeals action at this point, um, they would still be required essentially to follow that path.
I think what will happen, uh, Mr. George, is because this um was already denied at this hearing, if the planning board decided to not agree with their next plan they got brought forth, they could then still appeal the planning board's decision again, whereas you.
This doesn't prevent them, this doesn't prevent.
So, um, it might be, so part of, um, if you remember, kind of the continuation of the
Yeah.
the hearings was, um, they were working towards this. Um, and the reason that staff was recommended that we continue that is, um, we felt it was better if not to make a precedent, a precedent, um, in regards to that, um, kind of a situation, you know, to move in that that path, um, and so this still would keep that, they would still be working towards that that end. Um, but the the zoning board would then not have, um, with the withdrawn application, they wouldn't have a decision saying one way or the other in in regards to the planning board's activities.
I mean, does it take, I mean, is a month a difference in time for the next meeting to see if they do commit?
The problem is, is because the the, it's not been filed with the town clerk and what happens if it's not filed?
Well, it's, so the.
Then it changes, then you need unanimous consent and then for reconsideration.
Yeah, so so I guess.
And there's an.
Since it's kind of just a procedural thing, I think, um, if we start getting into continuing a request to withdraw with decision deadlines and stuff, I'm I'm just not sure how that plays out. Um, I would have to review that in more detail, um. I'm not su- I'm not sure there's a mechanism.
Whether it just gets withdrawn or not doesn't affect the facts on the ground.
Oh, correct.
It it's still, it still has to go to planning board again.
Correct.
And if, so let me play this out a little bit, so if we withdraw, if we allow the withdrawal.
Mm-hmm.
So so the only thing that's gonna happen, right, so we're we're right back to square one because of the. They don't agree with the planning board and they're gonna appeal the decision back to us again.
Right.
Yeah.
It doesn't preclude, the withdrawal doesn't preclude them from not being able to do that.
Right.
So we're we're exactly the same place.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm good.
We think so, so. So they're protected.
Right.
We still get to hear it if if it goes that far.
Correct.
For appeal.
For, for, right, if they decide to appeal.
Decide to appeal the next decision.
If 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 in the eleventh hour, they don't agree. They're negotiating it according to Mr. Belay, they're close. Uh, so, but if something falls apart at the end and and they don't agree and they don't include the inclusionary unit, um, they're gonna get denied by the planning board and they're gonna come in to appeal in front of us, so we're exactly the same place.
So, right, so, I mean, procedurally, it just kind of, I think it's there, it it cleans up the process in a way than rather than introducing additional questions.
It's easier than.
Never go wrong.
Right, right, okay, so can I get a motion?
I make a motion to allow withdrawal or reconsideration for five seventy-nine.
It has to be just withdrawal.
Withdrawal.
Just withdrawal, okay, I mean, I move to accept the withdrawal of five seventy-nine and five eighty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Um, can I get that?
Yes.
Everyone, the second vote is here. Is there any other? No old business, right?
Uh, no old business.
That was.
You do still have correspondence.
Yes.
Yes. So we've received a letter from, do you wanna?
Yes, uh, so there was a letter um that was sent um from Judy DeFalco to uh board members. Uh, this was circulated to a number of boards. Um, and so we've um included it in the packet and uh put it on the agenda um if the board wishes to dis- to discuss it, um.
I suspect this was to the planning board, even though it's.
Yeah, so this is, so this is, this is a a planning board.
This hasn't been before us in.
This is, it's a planning board item, um, currently, um, but because it was circulated to, um.
Well, it just says board.
Several board, and it and it was handed to several departments. Uh, we simply put it on the agenda. Um, if the board wishes to discuss it, I'm happy to, otherwise.
Anyone? You can't, you can't, all right. Okay. Anything else? Anyone have anything?
Uh, that would be it.
Can I get another motion?
Motion to adjourn. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.